22-508, 22-538, and 22-577, Committee of the Whole, Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM is called to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears, Counsel Carvillo.
President.
Counsel Collins.
President.
Counsel Knight. Attorney Nazi Counsel Knight. Counsel Scarpelli.
President.
Counsel Scarpelli. Counsel Singh.
President.
President Morrell.
Six present, one absent, the meeting is called to order. There will be a meeting of the Medford City Council Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Medford City Council Chamber on the second floor of Medford City Hall and via Zoom. The purpose of this meeting is to discuss Papers 22-508 and 22-538, special permit and Class II auto licenses requested by Lyft/Flex Drive, and Paper 22-557, a secondhand articles license request by Pro Repair. The City Council has invited Attorney Jeffrey Blake from KP Law, Cameron Javado from Pro Repair, and representatives from Lyft/Flex Drive to attend this meeting. For further aids, for further information, aids and accommodations, contact the City Clerk at 781-393-2425. Sincerely yours, Nicole Morrell, Council President. So as this meeting notice notes, this, both of these papers were sent to Committee of the Whole, just to allow us more time for questions, both with the representatives from these companies, as well as the counsel we've been provided from KP Law, Attorney Jeffrey Blake. I think we will take, as it's a shorter paper, we just have one person, we'll take the Pro Repair paper first, 22-557, with Cameron Javado from Pro Repair. And I'm happy if Counsel is going to open up with questions, if we want to hear from Cameron once again to remind us of the permit for the business CCK. You have any questions? But yeah, if you want.
Thank you, Madam President. And Madam President, you know, we talked about this last week, and I think some of the people may be confused in what the gentleman's doing. And I would, because you say you're junk, get a junk like this, and I think people are having a fear that the gentleman's going to open a store, and it's going to turn into a tool shop like on Riverside Avenue. And I don't want to see that in this query, that I feel the same. I would have no problem supporting this, as long as the gentleman with, signed an affidavit and say his business was repairing phones and repairing and selling phones only. And I would have no, that would he agree to that? It was, I would have no problem supporting that and then making the motion.
Would you have any issue with that?
Yeah, my, my business is about only like phone repairs and phone sales. Actually, I didn't know that secondhand article license also contains different items like TV selling, TV, bikes, and others. I didn't know that. But yeah, yesterday, from the City Hall, Small Business Development, Victor Schrader just came to my office and visited me, and he also aware of what I'm doing and what my business is about. So definitely, it's going to be on the phone repairs and phone sales.
And you'd be fixing computer like this computer? Yeah, I say, if you want to, if you want to state that in writing, I have no problem supporting it, and that will take away everyone's fear of, you know, of pawn shops, of jewelry and tools and that. So I say, I'd make that motion if the gentleman agrees to submitting something legally or to the counsel that his business is phone repairs, phone sales, you know, in tablet and et cetera type repairs.
Thank you, Counsel Carvillo. Counsel Scarpelli.
Thank you, Madam President. I know I tabled this, this, this paper because of that issue. So I know that the petitioner is, it's an understanding now, and I concur with Counsel Carvillo, I think this is a simple fix. If the petitioner would, would put that in writing, just to make sure that it eases the minds of the constituents that had the fear of what else could, could be moved into that, as long as we're, again, as long as we're legally, as long as we can legally do that and ask for that, I would move to support that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Scarpelli. Any other questions from the counsel? Since we do have Attorney Blake on the line, could you, do you have insight on if that's something, the process, just a process as far as just getting in writing, the exclusive use of this space, how we should go about that?
Thank you, Madam President. Jeffrey Blake here for, from KP Law for you guys. In my opinion, the authority to issue a permit, it also comes with the authority to condition that permit. And I think that you, you could get an affidavit or something in writing from the gentleman, but I also think that you could condition the permit. The permit is valid only for the use as, and in whatever language you'd like to put in there. That way, rather than having an affidavit from the, from the owner, it's, it's a condition of the permit, a violation of that condition of the permit would, could result in suspension, revocation, or yeah, suspension or revocation.
Thank you, Attorney Blake.
So Madam President, if I can?
Sure.
If, if I would make the motion that we would put that, those, those stipulations in writing, that it would be used for a cell phone repair, selling cell phone, I believe it's used cell phones, and computer projects, products, I think. Would that, would that suffice for the petitioner? If that was what we put in for the stipulations? Yes.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
Then I would, I would make that as the motion. Thank you.
Cell phones and cell phones.
Thank you.
Cell phones, tablets, and computers.
Yeah, smart devices, no TVs, no, no, any like second use, yeah, only for some cell phones.
So cell phones, tablets, and smart devices.
Tablets, computers, laptops, correct.
And, and sales of cell phones.
Definitely, yeah.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
Any further discussion from the counsel?
I would, I would just use the word phones instead of cell phones.
Okay.
Just given that the terminology is changing.
Fair enough.
Is that acceptable to Counsel?
Counsel Scarpelli, is this phones fine?
That, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Could you read that back to me when you have it?
Absolutely. Counsel Scarpelli moved to put the stipulations in writing that the shop would be used for a pair of phones, tablets, and computers, and sale, and sales of phones. And there's a second from Counselor Carvillo.
President Bears.
And I would further motion, assuming that that motion is approved, to report the paper out of, the license application out of committee with, with the aforementioned conditions.
Vice President Bears moved to report the license out of committee with the aforementioned conditions.
Second my Counsel Carvillo.
Yep.
So we'll take the first motion from Counsel Scarpelli, second my Counsel Carvillo. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counsel Carvillo.
Yes.
Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight is absent. Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counsel Singh.
Yes.
President Morrell.
Yes, six in the affirmative, one absent, zero in the negative, the motion passes. And we'll take your motion in brief, Justice affairs, second by Counsel Carvillo. Please call the roll when you're ready. This is to report the paper out of committee. With those conditions.
Vice President Bears.
Yes.
Counsel Carvillo.
Yes.
Counsel Collins.
Yes.
Counsel Knight is absent. Counsel Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counsel Singh.
Yes.
President Morrell.
Yes, six in the affirmative, one in, I'm sorry, one absent, zero in the negative, the motion passes, Vice President Bears.
Thank you, Madam President. And just, Cameron, thanks for coming to this one. We have to report it back out and vote on it one more time at our regular meeting. I think we can have that on the agenda for next week's meeting. I would also say probably you don't have to be here for it, although I'll let my other counselors speak, where I think we just.
Yeah, you don't have to come.
Yeah. If you want to be here, you're welcome, but you don't have to be here.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot.
So moving on to Papers 22-508 and 22-538, these are the papers regarding the special permit and Class II auto license request by Lyft/Flex Drive. I know we have representatives on the call from that company, and happy to take questions from Counselors first, or if we want to hear Counsel Carvillo.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I don't have any problem approving this one either. I mean, I, I bet you most people don't even know Lyft even has an office in Medford. They're, they're, they've flown under the radar, I think, with the last four years. No one even knows they're over, on top of Men's Warehouse, the Fells Way. And my only concern is, you know, so you're, you're having, what, 80 cars? How many cars again? How many cars going to be parked in station landing?
Are they at any given time? We have spaces for 50.
Okay.
But that is designed as overflow, things go wrong.
Can I just, sorry, can I just have your name in a chat?
Yeah, sorry. My name is Glenn Solomon. I work for Flex Drive, and I'm from Georgia, South State.
Glenn?
Glenn, yes. Two S.
Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so my, my only question is, so when someone goes to pick up a car, what do they do with their car?
So, a majority of the Lyft drivers, they either get dropped off, and one of the great bonuses of this spot is it's right next to a train station, so the public transit allows them to get there, but no Lyft drivers are able to leave their vehicles on that site.
Where would they leave their car if they had a?
They need to either bring someone with them that will take that car away, and/or they'll need to take public transit or a Lyft to the site.
They wouldn't be able to leave their car on one of, one of the 50 spots?
Correct. Only Lyft employees will use those spots.
Thank you, Counsel Carvillo. Counsel Scarpelli.
Okay, thank you very much. I had some questions, both legally and we asked for the traffic report. Is, is Mr. Blake there this evening?
Looks like he is out sick today.
Okay. So the, the biggest, the biggest concerns, one where the, the, making sure that if they're parked in the city, that the excise tax would go to the city of Medford, as, as was stated. The, the other questions I had was that, you know, that the impact in traffic, especially in that area, I know there was talks probably about the, I'm glad to hear it's only 50 cars. I thought it was a lot more. I thought it was some, the talk was about 150 cars. So that, that, that makes me a little bit more at ease, but at the same time, I would have loved to talk to Mr. Blake about, you know, the study that was signed off from traffic, saying that there is no, there would be no issues. And I think that if we have the representative here, I, I would move to approve it if we put a 90-day review for the fact that, I'd like to see what it looks like at the site at the Fells Way Plaza. You know, if there was any within the 90 days of operations that, there would be, there would be an impact of overflow of cars at that location, so.
Thank you, Counsel Scarpelli. Counsel Carvillo.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I, I don't see a need for a traffic report to get, because these people, they're going to take the car and go. They're not going to be, if they happen to be driving around the city, then pick them and say that's, they were going to be here whether, whether they got a car from you, or they, they got a car somewhere else. So, I mean, so I think the traffic impact is, is negligible at best, because they, because they, how many cars, you said, would they be here at the?
So there should never be more than 68 cars, so.
So 68 cars, so 68 cars is really negligible for the traffic in that area.
Madam President?
Counsel Scarpelli.
Like, like I said, I, I understand that, if we can just put a 90-day review on that, taking sure, just to, just to make sure that there isn't a, and it's not really that area, it's the area at the Wellington Circle, well, the, 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 one of the most dangerous intersections in the nation, so. And then the overflow of parking in the area for, especially in the morning. So, like I said, I, I understand that. I, I would, I did some research, I can understand that, and I would move forward to approve it, as long as we put a 90-day review on that, just to make sure that we have no concerns or issues or overflow or parking over at that location.
Thank you, Counsel Scarpelli. Counsel Singh.
Um, if this does go forward, I know other counselors have questions, I might have questions as well. I would, out of the abundance of caution, like to see a traffic review, just because, as I think Counsel Scarpelli said, while the Wellington Circle area is, is known for its traffic problems, that's somewhere I, where, it's a neighborhood where I grew up, so I know how hectic it can be around there, and just out of, out of an abundance of caution, if this does go forward, I would like to see a traffic review.
Thank you, Counsel Singh. Any other discussion from counselors? Justice affairs.
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for being here, Glenn.
What's happening?
Quite a trip.
Worth it.
I guess, first off, just for some context, how big is Flex Drive as a company?
From a employee standpoint, vehicle standpoint?
Employee vehicles, yeah, or, or how many states do you operate in, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so Flex Drive is, is spread around the country. We have another number of locations across the country where we operate our rental vehicles.
Yeah.
As far as absolute size of staff, I don't know, those off the top of my head, I, I really focus on moving the cars from A to B, the operational side.
Gotcha. Do you only work with Lyft, or do you work with other companies?
I personally only provide the vehicles for Lyft.
Okay. Just, but does Flex Drive as a company provide vehicles for other companies?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. You know, and my concerns with this, you know, I definitely have community concerns with this, I can understand the traffic impact, I can understand the, you know, some of the locations near a wetland, I've heard some environmental things come up. My real concern about this is about, is kind of the economics and, and of the workers, the folks who are working for Lyft and, and renting the cars. What happens, you know, someone rents a car, but the Lyft, you know, they don't make enough money on Lyft for the day to pay for the car? What happens in that situation?
I unfortunately am not, not the correct person to ask that. I'm on strictly the Flex Drive side, not the Lyft side of the business.
Yeah.
So my interactions don't go as far as that.
We do have Kristi Ortons from Lyft on the call. Kristi, could you speak to that? As well as Lily? If anyone from Lyft could speak to that question from Justice affairs? Repeat the question.
Sure, sure. The question was, you know, if someone, you know, a driver rents a car for the day to drive Lyft, but doesn't bring in enough fares to cover the cost of the car, what happens?
Similar, similar to like they do with Uber and Lyft, those who rent cars from, like Uber does, they have a deal with Hertz, their car payment comes off first, before you start making any money.
Okay.
So if you don't make enough money, then you.
Then you owe the company, Flex Drive money. Okay.
Kristi, can you, is that correct?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't know that I can answer that question either, in terms of what happens if they can't pay.
Okay. And then, you know, I'm also heard, you know, I think to Counselor, it was Counsel Carvillo's question about the, or maybe it was Counsel Scarpelli, the onsite parking for like a personal vehicle. So you get there in a personal vehicle, rent this, because your personal vehicle, maybe it's too old to be a Lyft, right? Something like that. You know, we're hearing you'd have to have someone with you to drive the car away, or you have to take public transit or a Lyft. You know, that's a pretty significant cost to the person involved, and it may not be directed at you, it may be directed at Lyft. You know, was, is there, you know, do you provide compensation to the driver for the cost of public transit, or do you provide a free Lyft to allow them to get to the site to access the vehicle?
Again, I, I don't understand, I don't know how that Lyft side of that works, so unfortunately, I can't answer that either.
Kristi, are you able to answer that?
Yeah, so the, we are not, we don't compensate for the driver coming to the site. It's just like a normal, you know, rental agreement, where if they, you know, this is a service that we provide, and if it's something that they want to utilize, you know, they come to, they make the appointment and they come to the site.
Got it. And then I guess my question there would be to Attorney Blake, would it possible, be possible to put a condition on the permit requiring that either parking be provided for a personal vehicle, or compensation be provided to the person for their transit time to the site?
I think the former would be a sufficient nexus for this land use permit. I don't think the latter would be requiring compensation. This is a land use permit, and there has to be a nexus. Obviously, having parking, sufficient parking for what could be overflow would have a sufficient, and is, is clearly outlined in your ordinance, the, the latter requiring compensation. I think that probably goes beyond what you could do with a land use permit.
Got it, yeah. And I figured you were going to say that, but I just wanted to make sure you were. I, you know, again, I, I voiced my concerns here that, you know, basically, we're talking about moving from a, a business model around providing rides to folks, where, you know, you had compensation and capital costs borne by the corporation, now to have compensation and capital costs borne by the worker, and the worker actually has fewer labor protections under the new model than they did under the old model. And, you know, I understand, you know, that's certainly good for profits, it's certainly been good for transit network companies, you know, in the short-term game of their share, game of their shareholders, but I seriously question whether it's good for our society and our economy, and for people themselves. So at the very least, you know, I'd like to see if we could do the condition that parking be provided for the personal vehicle, that's, it seems like that may be the one thing we can give to the person coming to the site to take a little bit of cost or something off of their plate. So I'll believe that as it is, that's something I'd like to see. I'm not sure, I know there's other counselors, I don't know if we're moving this out tonight, or waiting for traffic study or what, but if we, when we do move forward, I'd really like to see that condition put on. And to be quite frank, I'm going to try to think of any other conditions I can that would serve the same purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Justice affairs.
Parking be provided for workers' vehicles?
Yes. Counsel Scarpelli and then Counsel Collins.
I'm good, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Scarpelli. Counsel Collins, then Counsel Carvillo.
Thank you, President Morrell. Thank you to the representatives who are here tonight, much appreciated. Thank you, Attorney Blake. I'm, I'm also interested in getting additional context around this permit. You know, it's, I, it's well-heard, the point about this site be very close to the orange line. We also know that ridership levels are not at all what they were a few years ago, so I am concerned about, at, at the same time, I'm concerned about drivers, I was going to call them employees, but they're really more like customers who are coming to the site to use the cars, you know, and making sure that there's a reasonable accommodation for them, since they're, you know, paying, paying to use this service to pick up, to pick up riders. At the same time, if we can only condition the permit for providing parking to drivers and not compensation for those who are traveling to the site by other means, that strikes me as a bit of an inequitable compensation mechanism, because we're only conditioning for those who are arriving in personal vehicles, and not those who, you know, for example, maybe they don't have access to a personal vehicle, maybe they can't afford one. So I am interested in entertaining that, but it strikes me as kind of only getting out a fraction of the worker population that we're, that we're trying to include here. So kind of on, on both sides of that issue of how are folks getting to this site to use the cars, personal vehicles, public transit, you know, to the extent that some will be driving, pick up the, the Lyft vehicles, I, I am interested in seeing that traffic study. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Collins. Counsel Carvillo.
Thank you, Madam President. I want Counsel Bears on this one here, as far as the employees there. People who work for Lyft and, and other similar type companies have to work an awful lot of hours to make a decent living wage. And, and now, now they're going to be renting a car from you, do you have a, do you know what the daily rate is that they're going to pay? Do you know what the daily rate they're going to be paying, or weekly, or monthly? Now, and listen, I'm, I'm, I'm in that same business, and I see them, they're these people, they work tremendous amount of, amount of hours, put in, I think they work way too many hours to make it, to make a barely a, a living wage. So, you know, I understand you morrowite, but I don't, I don't like practices of, of Lyft and Uber myself, right? You're not doing anything illegal, but there should be better compensation and better benefits for these people who really are out there an awful lot of hours to, I say, to make a lot, but I say, especially with gas being the way it is now, it's going to, you know, they're going to be spending more money to rent these vehicles. So that's, like I say, you know, I, I understand your company, I just don't like how they treat the employees.
Thank you, Counsel Carvillo. Any further questions, discussion from the counsel? And if I could, just to essentially, to summarize, and this is going to be a question for Attorney Blake, I, I think multiple counselors, if not all the counselors have expressed, you know, we are elected to serve in the public interest, and I think a lot of us feel that these types of companies, because of the amount of hours, because of the low pay, because you could, yes, you can get increasingly lower pay depending on how you operate, we have concerns about this operating in our community, but it's my understanding, Attorney Blake, that we are very limited in the reasons for denial, and as you've said, conditions, correct? Because it is land use, it's not about business organization.
That is correct, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Carvillo.
Are, are they going to be bringing the cars back to that, when they've done, are they going to be bringing the cars back to that location also?
Correct. Rentals, pickups, and returns will happen at that location.
And will they be, like I said, will they be checking into an office or anything? I just, just drop them off?
Yep, so we have the office there, and what we do is we set up appointments on an hourly basis throughout the day, throughout the week, however we need.
So they're going to have to walk?
Drivers make an appointment.
They'll have to walk across the street to, is there going to be an office on the, on the station landing side?
Yeah, so at the location where the physical location is that we'll be operating out of, the drivers will drop the vehicle at that location, so no crossing of the street, and then Lyft employees will bring those vehicles to that side separate lot.
Okay.
All right, Lyft employees are the ones on site.
Kristi Ortons, I saw you had your hand up.
I did, yeah. One of the things that I just wanted to bring up too is, we have done traffic studies in the past for other markets, and just one thing to bring up is our peak times tend to be between noon and 3 o'clock, and usually attends, I mean, even more so, it's been around 1:45 to 2:45. So I just wanted to call that out, because our drivers want to be out on the market, you know, want to be out driving during peak times, and so from a traffic perspective, really the in and out happens in the middle of the day. Just something that I wanted to call out from a traffic perspective.
I appreciate that. Have you, have you been to the space where this would be operating from?
I have, yes, I have been, yeah.
I have.
It's a uniquely challenging intersection regardless of the time of day, so.
True, yeah.
It's a mess over there. Any further comments, questions from the counsel?
I'm still thinking. I don't want to end, but I don't have anything to say.
Yeah, this will, if, if this paper is voted out, we will have Counsel Collins.
Thank you very much, President Morrell. I'm, I'm curious, I was just reviewing before this meeting, the draft comprehensive plan, to the extent that that touches on, you know, some of the guideposts that we have for, well, guideposts for the community as they pertain to jobs in Medford, you know, this, this plan, which is still in draft form, it mentions vibrant jobs, it mentions professional jobs, high-paying jobs, jobs that, you know, serve Medford residents and keep Medford residents employed within the community, you know, and obviously very well aware, this is a land use ordinance, and it's only that. At the same time, I was curious, at the point that we are waiting on a traffic study in order to consider this matter further, I was curious if we might be able to request from Lyft, in this context, for, for a subsequent meeting, information for markets similar to Medford on average daily driver compensation, hourly compensation, from, from how far away are most drivers coming in, how, how many hours are they spending on the road in or around Medford? You know, I, I know I've heard from constituent concerns about, you know, when the hourly rate for a driver gets, gets low. Of course, that, you know, incentivizes drivers to drive more, we want to make sure that we are not creating an incentive structure in Medford wherein drivers are having really long days on our roads, and just other, you know, worker, worker metrics and road safety metrics such as that. So I'd be curious to entertain if Representative could, Lyft could provide that type of information for a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. So I just want to make sure you're asking to see if a similar metropolitan area could provide information related to daily rates, compensation, where, where folks are traveling from?
That would be if Lyft could provide for, you know, for an example or two of metropolitan areas similar to Medford, average hourly wage, average daily wage, how many hours per day drivers are spending on the roads, how far away. average hourly wage, average daily wage, how many hours per day drivers are spending on the roads, how far away they are traveling to Medford to pick up those cars.
Thank you, Counselor Collins, Christie, is that something that, is that data that's available, that might be able to be provided, either, you know, now or in the future?
I, I mean, it's not information that we would be sharing, and part of it too, is, you know, this is for us asking for permission for the rentals used, and just to clarify, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we all understood that the drivers that come onto the site can use the vehicle for personal reasons, for other platforms, that they are not using the vehicle solely, or can, but they, they don't, they're not required to use the platform or this service only on our platform.
Thank you for that, Counselor Carvial.
For those who know, these people are classified as independent contractors, they don't get an hourly wage.
Misclassified.
Yeah, well, misclassified, they're classified as independent contractors, so they're not, they're not getting any health insurance or any benefits from the company. For those who don't know, City of Medford derives, I think, twenty cents for every, every ride share service that starts in Medford, and be surprised how many that do start in Medford, I think last year we had a couple hundred thousand. So, and they say, they're not, and those cars that they're taking aren't necessarily gonna be in Medford, you know, if they happen to get calls in Medford, then they do, but they're made to go anywhere they want, some of them will be doing food deliveries, am I correct, like, you know, Rupp-Hub and and they can use anything they want, so, these people are, and they say, they're independent contractors, and, and they, and they have to really scramble to make their money. You'll notice that a lot more of these, a lot of Uber drivers and Lyft drivers have now switched over to the food platform, because they realize that they can stay in their own community and make more money and get tips, which they're not getting when they, when they do the right, the ride share service from other people, so, again, now, I know there's not much, I know, I know we don't get to stipulate when you pay your employees, or don't pay them, that's not what they have to review, but, you know, I I do think, I don't, I don't support your model for what you do with employees.
Thank you, Counselor Carvial, to that point, Christie, if we're using, wrong question, if, if folks can use these vehicles for whatever they decide, does that T and C charge still apply the same way for each ride? So it's like if they're, so that surcharge that we have in the state of Massachusetts for these rides, so if they're checking the car out for whatever, does that, does that surcharge still enact? Right, but if they're taking the car that originates in Medford to run errands? Is that correct, Christie?
It's based off of the, how, when they're using the app. When they're on the platform, it's not, it does, it's not connected to the vehicle itself.
Okay, so it would just be, if they're, you're right, if they're in it, if they're, okay, it's when the app is on, great, thank you for that. Vice President Baer's.
Thank you, Madam President. First question's along a similar line, Christie, do we expect non-Lift or app workers to use the service?
So the, the driver has to be on the platform to make the appointment to use the service, but the, they can use it for other services or other times, you know, for other things that they need. So the, the advantage to this program is that there are individuals out there that don't have a vehicle, and this is an opportunity for them to be able to rent a vehicle and make an income through the, you know, through the platform. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Uh, yeah, I mean, so you have to have the Lyft app to get the car?
That's correct.
So even though you could use it for other purposes, you're, you know, you're starting on the Lyft app at the very least?
That's correct.
Do you provide any sort of additional coaching, financial training, you know, estimated, you know, some sort of guide as to what a worker can expect to make, you know, or why the, essentially, do they get any additional financial literacy information to know whether or not they're actually gonna, you know, make a positive income or, or not using this service compared to when they're using their own personal car?
Unfortunately, I don't, I mean, I, to be honest, I don't know that I can answer that question, but it's definitely something that we can find out and provide that information.
That would be helpful. And then, this, this question may again be for Attorney Blake, but could we condition some sort of regular report be provided to the city based on the activities at the site? And what, what would the limits be? And I know that's an open question, so I guess it's first, could we can condition some sort of regular reporting? And what are the limits of the information we could request in that report?
Thank you, Counselor, in my opinion, you could request reports, but those reports would have to have a nexus to the criteria outlined in the bylaw. And I think probably the big one, and the earlier counselor had indicated that he wanted to have them come back in ninety days, I think what you could do is you could ask for traffic information and that kind of information, and you could ask for, for monthly or quarterly reports.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, I think, knowing that as a tool in our toolbox, I think we, you know, thinking about what we may want to include in a report like that would be a valuable exercise to do. I have a couple right off the top of my head, but I would like more time to think about it.
Great, and a reminder, this will come in for us at the regular council meeting, if we decide to vote it out. Counselor Collins.
Thank you, President Morrell, I appreciate that, I think that the idea of the recording mechanism that Vice President Baer suggested is, is a good idea, I think that's something that might be able to allay some of my concerns. Given that we kind of have asks out for some of these other metrics, like the, you know, sort of de facto hourly compensation, daily compensation that I asked about, and the traffic report, I would make a motion to keep this paper in committee for now, while we're waiting for this additional information. I think when we get that additional context, that will be information that I think would be helpful for us to discuss in, in this setting in some more detail, just because there's kind of a lot of data points that will be included in that, in that cache of data with the traffic report and whatnot.
Thank you, Counselor Collins, Counselor Sank.
I'd second that motion. Oh, oh, I was gonna second it, I, I think it's reasonable, as we're waiting for them, these are questions about worker metrics and the traffic report that we take that, we need again to evaluate.
Yes, I, I just, but I just wanna understand that Lyft has said they will not be providing us with those worker metrics?
Oh, I, I just heard Christie say that could provide a metrics on whether they provide financial literacy training to the workers. You know, Mr. Blake is sick as well, so he can maybe come back and provide additional information when it comes to traffic.
Absolutely, I wasn't, I wasn't speaking out against the motion, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on what we can expect before the next meeting.
I did have a question, is, do we know if there's an environmental impact report out there? Because I, I know some, some residents have reached out to Counselor Baer's and I about the environment, potential environmental impact of this, I don't know if our city has a report or anything.
We were not given one?
I don't believe we were. Could we, could we request one if there isn't?
Attorney Blake, is that something we could request of the petitioner, or?
If there are environmental concerns, you can certainly request information regarding those concerns, and/or a, some type of report that says there are no environmental concerns from the petitioner, yes.
Thank you. Did you hear that? She said if there are environmental concerns, we can request that, or request some type of report that would say that there are no environmental concerns of the petitioner?
Well, I would move to request the report.
So we have a few motions before us, we have the first from Counselor Scarpelli.
Madam President, I would, I would see what the other votes would go first, if you wanna keep this in committee, that would, okay, thank you.
I would second Counselor Sank's motion.
Okay, so first, we have the motion from Vice President Baer's, sorry, Counselor Collins, to keep this in committee as we await the traffic report and the answers to Vice President Baer's questions from the petitioner. Counselor Collins?
Yes.
So, and an environmental report?
Yeah. So the motion of Counselor Collins has amended by Counselor Sank, which is to.
So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say Counselor Sank withdrew his original motion and added an amendment to the.
Okay, I agree.
Okay.
So on the motion of Counselor Collins to keep the paper in committee, to allow us to get the traffic report responses to the questions from Vice President Baer's, as well as a report or statement of environmental impact. Or potential environmental impact.
Read this back. Counselor Collins moved to keep the paper in committee for now, until the council receives additional information, a traffic report, an environmental report, or statement of environmental impact. And that is with a second from Vice President Baer's.
I would just take the words for now out.
Yeah, I'll take that out. Yep, hang on. Transcribed rather than wrote a motion. I have a second from Vice President Baer's on that.
On the motion of Counselor Collins, seconded by Vice President Baer's, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Baer's.
Yes.
Counselor Carvial. Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight is absent, Counselor Scarpelli.
Yes.
Counselor Sank. President Morrell.
Yes, six in the affirmative, one absent, zero in the negative, the motion passes. Any further discussion, questions from the council?
Counselor Scarpelli has his motion out there, but he wanted to.
Do you want, would you like to keep your motion or withdraw it?
I would withdraw right now, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scarpelli. Motion? On the motion of Counselor Carvial to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Sank, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Oh, Vice President Baer's. Counselor Carvial. Counselor Collins.
Yes.
Counselor Knight is absent, Counselor Scarpelli. Counselor Scarpelli? To adjourn.
I think he's gone.
He just.
I think he was, I was, I muted him because there was.
Counselor Sank, President Morrell.
Yes. Five in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes, meeting adjourned.